All right, I'll pull me to order and first off is the flag suit. Everyone please rise and we'll do the. Right. Thank you. So moving on, we're on both of the office. So we have two new board members tonight that are gonna read the oath of office and will be able to participate in the rest of the meeting. So you guys can stand, you can sit, you can do it, you can raise your hand, you can just stand and read it. It's pretty informal.
Okay, Gavin.
Go for it.
I, Lisa McHale. First Julie Sore will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Fernridge School District. During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge responsibilities of the Office of School Board Members, best of my ability, and will always try to insistively put forward first the welfare of children entrusted in the school district.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, so moving on, I don't believe we have any public comment. And then approval of last month's minutes. So this has required board action. Anyone see anything that needs to be fixed or changed from that?
I moved the approve minutes.
The motion second, any other discussion? Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passed, any opposed? Motion passes five to zero, I skipped over four, let's go back to Scott Rose, so we'll. It was right next to the public comments, I missed it.
All right, sorry Scott. Not a problem at all. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, good. Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to join via Zoom. I am out of town this week. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Scott Rose. I've been in the educational planning, assessment, design, construction industry for the last thirty-five years. And in fact, I was even a project manager down at 4J from ninety-three to ninety-five before joining next educational design firm up in Portland. And for the last six years, I have been an owner's rep for school districts. So I help school districts go through bond analysis as well as help them hire designers and contractors and oversee the quality of the work. And I'm doing that right now for about four school districts and happy to be back here at Fernridge. So your school district reached out to RNC Management Group and myself to restart a planning process that was accomplished in, oh, two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. Back up a little bit is, let's see, looks like you're seeing a page here. Could you go to page four of your package? And I'll kind of just talk through that. We've got the table of contents there and so yeah, going through the values there, I'll allow you to read that. It really just aligns with the district's board values and the next page, kind of looking at the timeline. There we go, good process. So your district passed a bond issue in ninety-seven. And in two thousand eleven, ten and eleven, attempted bonds again and they were not successful. And so I was engaged in two thousand twelve and thirteen to help your district go through a full assessment and planning process. And you passed a bond in two thousand fourteen. And that bond built replacement for Elmira Elementary School, did an addition down to the high school and on Benita Elementary School, and then did some other modifications around your buildings. And that went from fourteen to sixteen. And then in twenty and twenty-one, we were brought in to do the new state assessment and planning process. In that, let me back up here a moment. In two thousand nineteen, you went out for an athletics only bond. And that was not successful. Some of the exit polling identified that while there was some general support for athletics, it felt like it was very much sort of niche projects for just one particular group rather than kind of addressing all the needs of the district. And so in two thousand twenty, we were brought in to do a assessment and planning process utilizing the state's new awesome grant and specifically the district received a TAP grant of forty-five thousand dollars to do that assessment and planning. And we did that and put together that planning process and that report for the school board in two thousand twenty-one. But as we all know, we were in the middle of COVID at that time. And the district determined that based on the impacts of of COVID and the recession and so forth, that it didn't make sense to go out for a bond issue at that time. And so towards the latter part of two thousand twenty-two, we were brought in again to kind of essentially dust off that assessment and planning process. Make sure the assessment conclusions were still valid. If there was anything that had gotten in worse shape or had been repaired since our assessment, do a modify the existing settlement plan and then go through a community-based planning process again. And we did that here in two thousand twenty-three. And so you had a committee and if you go to the next page, you can see all of your committee members. So we had multiple meetings there and you can see down there and unfortunately, because I'm in Zoom, I don't know who all is there this evening, but you had a great group of people that were very consistent in their attendance at these meetings, which is as critical as you as each meeting builds off of prior ones. So a wide group of not only community members, but also staff and even a couple of board members. So it was a good, good cross-section of your community. We went through a lot of the different needs for the district. Not just physical, but also educational needs. And we came up with a list of projects based on the assessments that we did and that the state paid for that initial assessment. And we compiled them into an overall prioritized list. And we also broke it down in kind of two buckets of money, if you will. If you could go to the next page, please. All right, so we have this recommendation here. So we broke down and it's helpful for people to when you're, when you're pushing this out to the public to break this out into smaller buckets of money and smaller collections of projects. To list just everything in one list can be overwhelming, a little bit daunting for your community. So we broke these down into tiers, one, two, and three, based on level of importance. But your community-based committee determined that really we needed to do all of these projects. And we broke them down into tiers just so people again can kind of manage these projects in bite-sized pieces. So tier one were really the most, the most dire, the most critical in that. I'm sorry, did somebody have a question?
No question.
No? Okay, great, great. So tier one was investing in science and not just the middle school or high school, but throughout that six-twelve band. Because your science labs in both schools are fairly antiquated. I'll say, you know, they're kind of in the, you know, nineteen fifty's genre, if you will. And I see that around a lot of different school districts, not just in Oregon, but you know, across the country is that a lot of what we do with science now becomes more technology-based, the, the the projects that you're working on are much more, are different and more fluid and a lot of the more built-in components of science labs of the fifties and sixties aren't as relevant to the type of science that you're teaching now, or at least the, the exercises that you're doing in within science classes. But that was a big deal for, for your committee at both levels, both the middle school and high school level. Mechanical systems throughout most of your, your district, and I'll always use sort of the exception with Elmira Elementary because it is your newer, newer building. But your mechanical systems really need a lot of attention. And with improvements to your mechanical systems in terms of both controls and some of the physical equipment, not only will the controls allow you to more quickly and efficiently diagnose problems in your mechanical systems long-term, but also allow for better controllability in terms of thermal and ventilation. And we know, you know, with, with recent issues regarding COVID, that ventilation was a big focus. And, and that continues to be, and that, that's ventilation, improved ventilation, improved thermal characteristics in classrooms have been a cornerstone of a better educational environment for a couple of decades now. A lot of the studies prove that out. So mechanical systems, some restroom work. You have some parking areas that we've kind of broken into tier one and tier two. The main parking lot at the high school in the South Drive. And then most all of the parking lot of Benita Elementary School is well beyond its useful life. Not, not only has it broken down, but it's actually started to affect your subgrade. So parking lots in those two areas will require not just replacement of the paving, but some select sections of the rock's upgrade as well. Water's gotten in there and it's made some of those areas undulate. And so those are more, I'll say, extensive parking lot needs that are really, really fairly urgent. And, and that happens. Parking lots age and eventually you need to reinvest in them. And then, of course, a replacement of the grandstand structure, you know, you know, the grandstand was rotted. I believe you recently demolished that. I've not been there in the last thirty days. It was, it was deemed unsafe. In fact, when I was doing the physical assessments, I was out there on a Saturday as well and I was climbing up the steps to the press box. And I fell through two of the steps and that was probably not wise of me to do on a Saturday, but it was around. So anyways, I started to look at a lot of the structural members. Yeah, there was a lot of dry rot. That was actually evaluated by a structural engineer as well, and I believe by the local fire department. So everybody was saying, hey, this, this grandstand is no longer safe. It needs to be replaced. And, and again, for a wood grandstand at a school district, that is not uncommon. Over time, that, that grandstand was decades old and it just needed to be replaced. So it's come down right now. We've got two different scenarios of how to replace that, that I'll go over in a moment. And then the tier three is primarily what I've, we've kind of coupled together is, is energy usage and then site development. And site development is more items regarding storm drainage, regarding site fencing, regarding some playground items, some other things that are kind of, I'll say, more smaller scale, if you will. Tier two and tier one had the parking investments. Tier one was the more extensive ones. Tier two parking investments was a little bit at Fernridge Middle School and the back lot at the high school. That those parking lots, while they've deteriorated, they haven't gotten to a point of impacting your subgrade or your rock's upgrade. So it's primarily more surface cracks and now's the time to take care of it. As opposed to letting it continue to deteriorate and that'll be more like the main lots at the high school or at Benita. So the, that base plan came to, as you can see here, a recommended budget of twelve point two million dollars. And, you know, costs have drastically rose since your two thousand fourteen bond. It's just kind of a sad reality of what we're, we're dealing with right now. So so these budgets reflect not only what our current costs are, but a recommended inflation for if you go out for a bond in May of twenty-four, and that's not a decision that you've made yet, nor do you need to make tonight. But all the budgets are based on that direction that we receive from the committee of we think November, this November is too soon, but May of twenty-four seems right. We want to get ahead of further inflation and further deterioration of some of the system. And so that timing is part of the recommendation that the board's receiving tonight. And again, the board does not need to take action on these recommendations as much as receive them and acknowledge the committee's work in it. And then there will be polling in August and September, the community to sort of test some of these ideas and some of these costs. And from that data, we'll come back to the board in probably October to make decisions about whether or not you want to go out for a bond in May of twenty-four. And the reason for that timing is December fifteenth of this year, you would need to apply for what they call an awesome grant. It's an Oregon School Construction Program grant. And that grant, if, if awarded, is six million dollars. And it has been four million and it is still four million this year. But January one, it changes to six million. So this December fifteenth, if you apply and you receive that, then you have an additional six million available to you on top of the twelve point two million dollar base plan. So as we looked at, well, what would that six million do? It really handles a lot of these other needs that were more, I'll say, very specific to the athletic portion of the campus, but also as it relates to physical education. And it affects all sports. So the replacement of the grandstand is in the base plan, but the idea is that it's replacement of, with other grandstand in more or less its current location. So you keep the field where it is. You keep the track where it is. You're not doing any work to the field or the track. You're really just reinvesting in that existing grandstand, sort of a very bare bones. This is what we need to sort of replace to kind of get us back to where we are or where we, you know, where we have been recently. With the additional state grant, the awesome grant of six million dollars, if you are awarded that, and they let you know within about a week, they, in fact, they let recipients know this last time, July fifteenth, it was actually the fourteenth, this last Friday, they let them know by the end of the day. So it was actually a very, very quick turnaround. So there are two application periods during the year, July fifteenth and December fifteen. And so if you were awarded that six million dollars, then it would expand that athletic investment to address not only replacement of the grants, but actually replacing the grandstand now over by where you have the existing track. It would be replacing the track with a regulation-sized track and a full, full rubberized track. It would replace the field in the middle of the track with a new synthetic field and that would become your new main field with the grandstand. The aluminum bleachers that you're buying as sort of temporary means for the replacement of your existing grandstand can serve as the blister bleachers. On the other side of the track, it would also address support buildings. You have some storage buildings and concession buildings that are deteriorated beyond really useful life. And then as well as dealing with the, the storm drainage requirements all around that area. So that investment would be really creating a new campus to serve a, a variety of, of sports programs for Elmira High School. And it's important to note too that, that the committee's recommendation to utilize the potential six million dollar state grant for that work is not displacing any other identified projects. So there wasn't like other projects that didn't make this list that are being cut for the athletics. This is the totality of your projects. There are a number of smaller-scale projects that were identified that the district actually has on a long-term investment plan to address over time that are more kind of on a maintenance cycle, I will say, as opposed to something that necessarily they felt was appropriate to put in here. And those projects are primarily at support facilities. They are not at your schools, the ones that are not on this list. So that'd be at the district offices, that'd be the transportation bar, be the maintenance building. So a lot of those areas that tend to not be well-supported by a community when you put them on a bond. Most community members like to see dollars being spent on schools, not on support facilities, even though supports facilities are very critical to the operations of a school district. So we made that, we drew that line there. So none of these projects are actually happening at a non-school facility. They're all happening at, at one of your four schools. And if you can go down just below, my apologies, I'm only seeing part of your screen there where it says related issues. So balanced messaging is really important that you, that you de-emphasize the two thousand nineteen bond, which was kind of, which was focused on athletics, but you really talk about all the students that are impacted. I mean, we're even talking about replacing the gym floor at Benita Elementary School. We're doing modest work at Elmira Elementary because it's your new facility. Primarily just at site drainage issues and sort of things that are affecting it on the perimeter. But Benita Elementary, it's taking care of the restrooms, it's taking care of mechanical systems, it's taking care of the parking lot, it's taking care of that gym floor, that gym floor is horrible for. It borders on a safety issue, really needs to get addressed. It's, it's looking at the middle school program and giving the middle school kind of a bigger piece of the pie, if you will. This go around in terms of your capital investment and then continuing to invest in your high school facility. Because all students eventually go through the middle school and the high school. And so it's important that this affects all students as you go through with that. And, and again, as I mentioned, that the athletic investment is really sort of going to move up or down depending on whether or not you get the state grant, or at least that's the recommendation from the committee on December fifteenth. And then the funding, as I mentioned, so looking at a general obligation bond of twelve point two million dollars with a desired cap of no larger than two dollars and twenty cents combined total bond tax rate prior and new. And that's really important because back in two thousand fourteen, when you ran your bond, your bond rate at that time for voters was two dollars and twenty cents. So the idea is to basically, that's, that's your, one of your messages to your voters is this bond would get us back up to the rate that you agreed to in two thousand fourteen. Because your rate has slowly diminished as you've had growth and, and more people moving into the area and so forth. So this is restoring that, getting that back up to two twenty. And that getting it back up to two twenty, the district can sell twelve point two million dollars in general obligation bonds, getting it back up to that two twenty. We felt that going beyond that might be an impact, too much of an impact to your community. And the two twenty had already been established as a sort of a threshold for your committee in the past. Whether or not that still vets as, as accurate or as real for your community, that's going to depend on some polling that we would do in August and September. And then, as I mentioned, the timing applied for the awesome grant in December fifteenth, issue the bond in May of twenty-four. And again, you don't have to take action on that tonight, but that's what all these numbers are predicated on. We would complete the science renovations over summer twenty twenty-five, because if we start in May twenty-four, you've got to start designing permits and a variety of things. But the science renovations are fairly compact and you can typically, you can probably get all those done over the course of the summer. We might cheat into some of those spaces perhaps in May, depending on what that looks like, if there's areas overhead that they can do in the evening and the like. We would replace the grandstand by fall of twenty-five. So that's pretty aggressive in that a year and a half after the bond is passed, most of the work would get done. The intention of that is again, just to kind of keep it in front of inflation and maximize your buying power. And then the rest of the information is primarily more support information. I don't believe, is there anything on the next page? My apologies, I can't see that. Okay. And then, yeah, the, the next couple of pages really get more into the detail what goes into each of those projects and a lot more specificity, but I'll, I will spare you all reading that verbatim this evening, but would open it up for questions and comments.
If you have any, if you have two questions right now, it'd be good. If you have, want to look at it obviously more and and then you come up with questions, you can get them to, you know, Mr. Carpenter and then to Scott and, you know, in many more detail.
And it's, and it's important to note too is that you will have months to ask questions. Really, ideally, we want to know whether or not we should apply for the awesome grant in December fifteenth. So you really have from now, I'll say, until your November board meeting to continue to ask questions and refine this and the like. This is just receiving this plan, not necessarily taking any action on it tonight.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we still apply for the awesome grant, decide not to go forward with the bond? Like if the awesome grant stand alone, is that still an option?
The awesome grant is a matching grant. So you could apply for, you could wait to make your decision on going out for a bond until January. You could apply for the awesome grant December fifteenth, and if you get it, or even if you don't get it, then you can make the decision, do we still go out for a bond issue in May? So if you get the grant and you decide to not go out for the, a bond issue in May, then you relinquish the grant. It goes to another school district because it is a matching grant and they want, they need a commitment. You actually have to sign a contract that you will go out for a bond in May of twenty-four. And so, so, but yes, you could, you could first see what the results are of the matching grant application before you decide to go out for a bond. I would recommend that you still get a lot of your ducks in a row ahead of that. And then the January board meeting is simply, do we go or not?
So Scott, it's, it's either six million or nothing.
It's, yeah, it's, well, yes, it is six million or nothing. If you only went out for a, say, a four million dollar bond, then the maximum you could get is four million because it is a matching grant. Your particular district, in terms of the funding formula, there are a hundred and ninety-seven school districts in the state of Oregon. And about a hundred and forty-some qualify for the minimum grant, which is six million dollars. And so the maximum is ten million. There's only about fifty districts that qualify for somewhere between the six and ten. And that's based on poverty statistics and a variety of other things, but your district only qualifies for six. And if you apply for the awesome grant, it is, yeah, sort of six or nothing. Yes.
It is possible, though, you said that if we apply and they say no, but there's other districts that decide not to do a bond that potentially we could get some money out of that if we decided to still do a bond.
Yes, yes. This program started in two thousand fifteen and, you know, knock on wood. Since two thousand fifteen, every single school district that applied, whether they were told they, they are grant-eligible, if you will, or they've been awarded, or they're on the waiting list. Every single school district, if they applied and they passed a bond, has received money. And because there's enough, there's enough that get the grant, if you will, or get awarded the grant. They don't get the money, but get awarded the grant that go out for a bond and don't pass their bond. So if they don't pass their bond, then people on the waiting list move up. And so that's, that's a good thing. So say you applied in December and you did not make the cut, but you were on the waiting list. That's a less compelling argument for your voters to say, hey, we don't have a state grant, but we are on the waiting list for a state grant. And if other districts above us don't pass their bond and we do, we get their money. It's a less compelling argument than just to say, we've got a grant waiting for us. It's six million dollars here. If we pass in May, we get it. And if we don't pass, we don't get it, it goes away. So that's a more compelling argument. But yes, again, every school district that has applied and has passed their bond, has gotten some money. There, there are because there's enough districts that don't pass bonds that, you know, those on the waiting lists do move up.
Any other questions?
Not at this time.
All right. Great. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah. And please do email me or email me through Gary Carpenter as you have questions and I'll be working with Gary over the next couple of months here as we look at putting a survey out to the community of just kind of testing some of these projects and some of these amounts to get some feedback that we can then provide that as data to the board as you're mulling over your decision whether or not to go forward with the bond.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to report. I, Chuck Bell is always here to talk about Chuck Bell's food service.
For sure. Getting products when it's almost impossible at times, being that we have very specific product needs. A lot of people aren't aware that all the products that we have have to have less sugar than a normal product, like our cereal and stuff like that. Our biscuits have to be whole wheat, white flour and some of that. So all those items are tough to get at times. We had a hot breakfast this year on a regular basis. We did a survey last year with the students and they requested some hot breakfast. So we added a hot breakfast about twice a week, sometimes a little less, a little bit more. And those seem to be doing okay. The biggest change I think we had is after two years of COVID, we went back to church. That was quite interesting, first week or two. Students didn't know their numbers, the staff had news, the registers will come time and we change register system. So it was kind of a unique situation. But this year we served just under a hundred and ten thousand lunches, about two thousand less than last year. And we served just forty thousand breakfasts this year as opposed to fifty thousand. I'm not sure exactly why the difference, because both breakfasts in years were free. Um but I'm not sure, I know the attendance enrollment was down a little bit years ago, not. Um one of the benefits we did is all that's down on return. Um we um with COVID situation. Getting staff as everybody hears, I was getting staff was almost impossible. The first year here, I was driving a truck in cooking and doing other things, so we got to a full staff this year. The last year's staff all returned, so we have um Violet Lambert. I don't know if anybody knows Violet, unfortunately she's going to. Um she doesn't like her pictures either. She's been here for thirty years.
Yeah.
Thirty plus years, she's amazing. Um we have, we have good, solid, long-term staff. Um we have Jessica offer. The day of um. New girls at the women at the middle school. She'll trip, yeah, Supreme of Arts. And we have some new people that. I hired Nina Cinkie for the first year, in the middle of the year this year, so at this point, at the end of the year, we were fully staffed. At this point, I anticipate everybody to come back, so things have a way of changing. Um and I know our driver who's driving the truck doesn't want to drive a truck anymore, so we'll have to work on that. Um we reopened the snack bar at the middle school. And then the holiday meals returned, because Mark knows he came and helped. Um we did almost four hundred meals at Benita, three hundred meals at Elira, um for our holiday meals. And our normal staff, our normal attendants are meals about two hundred and about a hundred and fifty, so we doubled. Both those for the holiday meals, it was great to see all the people coming in. It was again, getting back to normal. Um we also did the year-end barbecue with pressure numbers.
That's crazy.
It was almost five hundred at Benita and almost four hundred at Elira. It was, I was running back and forth. My boss wants me to take lots of pictures, as you can see, there's not many pictures of that because. I was running back and forth making sure every place had hot dogs and hamburgers that were supposed to.
I'm not sure if I signed a release, they could use my picture, that's.
Well, getting pictures released here is interesting, it's kind of fun though. Um the the staff works really well, but they had some of the pictures, and they said, yes, you're not allowed to. Um so we also did some new signage. At the elementary schools, we're having some challenges with the news falling down and breaking, but we're fixing that in summer. Um looking forward to next year, third year here. Um again, we're going to reduce our plastic and paper usage. Last year we went to metal forks, the metal spoons at the elementary schools, which was a big hit. We just got to figure out how to give them some. Running away, but luckily we found an inexpensive alternative. But we're going to be using all plastic or all usable at the elementary schools, we're going to be buying some. Sound bowls and some other stuff for those items. We're going to use, increase usage of the special programs development terminals. They have amazing programs, uh three of them are listed here, Global Leaks, Discovery Kitchen and Mood Boost. But Mood Boost is, is there's six monsters. You can see a little picture of a monster there. Um. They're strong, they're healthy, they're awake, and when we serve a product. Those without. Stereocentres, profits, makes me stronger, makes me this. No rest of. Um the scary kitchen, we bring in neat things for them to try. It's not part of the program. Meal products are just outside. And then Global Leaks is the newest one from Charvilles, where we go throughout the world, developing menus or meals. By those, we did some at the high school last year. Um we had some Cuban sandwiches and barbecue uh. Chicken bites. So we're going to expand that a little bit this year. Um we did do a survey for the parents, unfortunately when I was doing this, I couldn't give the information. But um I have copies of that, I can send that to Gary. The parents um. Are not disliked in service, they're having, they're not properly enjoyed by the service. It's not that we're doing anything wrong, it's just. They will, the kids want to eat at home, they're not what they want. All those, all the responses were basically, why doesn't your kid eat breakfast? Well, he eats at home. First he eats at home. Any questions?
Okay, so I would actually, um, do you have a result on the survey?
I do.
Okay.
So.
That happened?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you for coming tonight. We'll move on to superintendent's report.
I just got things to go over, one, I mean, you know, a while back, Westland Ten Annual Report. Darcy's in here. Question heard. Um I sent you my short summary. Uh I did cite this at the end of the year, I sent you a Darcy's longer report. Uh summary on the school year, this doesn't require board action, just information for you. Um anybody have any questions on any of that? Let me get Darcy in here just to. Maybe. As of all, we're seeing it being there, hold in, as a reminder, this is the fifth year of their five-year contract. Um so in the spring, I'll probably try to recruit one more member to be a part of the process. Um we're bargaining their contract, something that we're going to do different this year is hire uh. OSBA to come in and do an evaluation this year of Westland Charter, and then make a, make a recommendation to the board to. Either continue or not to continue. Uh if if the recommendation is to continue, the board elects to continue with the contract. Then we'll start bargaining that contract with them, so that'll happen in the spring. Uh when the recommendation, the bargaining occurs. OSBA will start their uh process in the winter. Uh diverting them and probably get a report to the board in the early spring about what they think so. Um and Darcy, it looks like she's in here, do you have anything to add, Darcy?
I don't think so.
Nobody has any questions, thanks for coming, Darcy, listen to them.
Sure.
Nobody has any questions, the next topic, um Staff Student Handbook. Also, we know that too a while back with our updates, there should be some smaller tweaks. Typically, it's not required, uh but in recent years, we have had more approved the handbook, just so they're informed about what's in there. That said that they haven't read it. There was really, there was lots of little editorial changes from. You know, names, phone numbers, extensions, the only real significant change in the handbook this year is the piece around fees, so. You know, there's no, in twenty-three, twenty-four, using some of our S A money to have no supply fees at elementary school, no supply list. The class fees at the middle school, no class fees in high school, no athletic games. The only fees K twelve will be optional ones, yearbook, A S B sticker. Annuals at the elementary school. Um P shirt will be optional for students, I think, at the middle schools, a few of those things. That's the only significant change to that, so.
So, I do have a question. The annuals, aren't they required by the middle school for sixth graders?
Oh, you might be talking about a planner, I'll talk about yearbook.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Annual yearbook, yeah, and the planners did have a fee, now it's covered, so we're buying the planners. Um out of our S A dollars.
Okay, thank you. Oh, so would you repeat that again, please? The things that K through twelve that are optional, that won't be covered?
A yearbook.
Uh huh.
At the elementary school, I think that's it. At the middle school, it'd be a yearbook and a P shirt.
At what level?
Middle school.
Thank you.
High school, I believe it's parking pass. Uh yearbook. An A S B sticker, which allows them to get into only athletic games for free. And if they want, I believe the last one that would be an optional is protection on their take-home Chromebook. So insurance protection, if they want that, that's a fee. The fees that went away at high school would be like class fees for drawings, ceramics, metals, auto body, Spanish. Um some of Mr. Monaghan's tech courses. Uh those kinds of things.
Thank you.
So on this side, I will be looking for more action to improve the handbook. Like I said, there might be some tweaks in the days to come, but they'll all be uh grammatical in there.
Okay.
So make a motion that the first of twenty, seventy-three to twenty-five.
Oh, second.
Motion is second, uh do we have any other discussion? Here now, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion here is five to zero, thank you.
Okay, the next thing was, as you see, we got new tables in here, new tables are. Going to the school, um but we monkeyed around with our setup, so. Make sure this, it it wasn't, there's lots of options in here, but none of them are great, so. This is only intended at the board retreat, if you don't like the way we're set up, this is your meeting. We can try some different things at the retreat, like this, we'll go with this for a while, but definitely open the suggestions and how we're set up in here. Uh and can talk about them on the table, so that's all I got.
All right. Um moving on to discussion items, uh we do have the board retreat on there for August eighth. Do we need to, we have a start time for that, I thought, for somebody, I saw we didn't really have a start time.
Yeah, I've been waiting till I see hammer list, uh items certainly won't be earlier than eight, it won't be later than nine. People have agenda items, a few of you have sent me some, probably by the end of this week, I'll get us a ballpark start time, but. Uh I would imagine eight, eight-thirty or nine, we'll go to three, we have O S B A from twelve-thirty to three. Um the items that you guys give me that you want to cover in the morning will be from when we start until eleven-thirty. Lunch will be provided. And again, just if you have an item that you'd like on the agenda, sooner you get to that.
And that is a public meeting, basically like a work session for the board. Uh we call it a retreat, this is because it was always been called that, but it's actually a lot of boards do work sessions. Sometimes every month, sometimes every other month or whenever needed, so that's pretty much what this is.
So can you add just um like fifteen minutes for the three of us that are going to this summer board conference? To talk about um how to split up different.
Sure, that's, all those uh the fall conference, talking about that, and summer conference on the agenda right now.
Great, thank you.
All right. Uh moving on to the fall conference, the the, we are, or summer conference, we are, the three of us are going with that. Um which is great, there's a lot of good classes there, it's something that we haven't really participated too much in the past, but um. Is there any, do you discuss anything else about that right now, or is that just something that'll be on the agenda too for? For the retreat? Okay, unless someone has any questions.
I do have a question, has that been cut off already? For the summer conference?
For registration? I think so, hotel maybe, but not going to the conferences.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, the, what did you have?
She asked if the cutoff for the date of the conference is is has came and gone.
Oh, so. But you were already. I was looking forward to seeing there.
All right, so next up is Houseville twenty-seven fifty-three, a statement for school board directors, and this will require board action. Want to talk a little bit about that real quick, Gary, or you've got some information on it already?
I sent you the new packet of. Actually printed it out a few days ago, around seventy educational laws that um. We need to get up speed on in the next month or two. Uh few of them have already started, uh and this being one of them. So Houseville twenty-seven fifty-three, I had a meeting with our attorney last week, just to get his perspective on exactly what we need to be doing here. What he shared was, this is a board decision, so board needs to discuss. And collectively decide. Um that you want to receive this law, made it possible for school board members to receive up to a five hundred dollar a month stipend. For each of you. If the board collectively decides. Um that they do not want us to receive this stipend, then that's it, we move on. If the board collectively discusses votes, they do want to receive this stipend, then an individual board member could opt out. But an individual board member cannot opt in, so the board will decide, you want to do this or not? If it is not, we move on, if it is they want to do it. Then all five of you could do this, or individuals could opt out, so. Uh that's the way that I understand it at this time.
I'd like to move that we reject um the Houseville twenty-seven fifty-three stipend for the entirety of the board.
The motion is second, any discussion?
When does this need to be finalized? As far as the vote from the board?
Well, we have a motion and second, so we have to vote on that tonight, no matter what, after the discussion.
Yeah, so I think, as far as I'm concerned, you could probably decide every month, so. If you, if the board, the state of board collectively was wanting to receive a stipend, and they did it now, then they'd probably receive one. In uh this month, in July.
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay, so what what I'm saying is, this is really. Pretty, pretty new, even though I have looked over this, okay? My thought is. And please, anybody, okay, so my thought is, number one is, I don't think, so this, these funds would come out of where?
Our budget.
Our budget, our budget.
Our budget.
The school. Just.
Which we haven't budgeted for, because we didn't anticipate, I mean, we didn't know that there's a bad, I mean, it wasn't something that was.
Right, well, obviously in our twenty-three, twenty budget, we didn't set aside thirty thousand dollars to pay the five folks five hundred dollars a month for the year. So just like any cost that comes up, I mean, we're planning, and we need to transfer from some other account that we had budgeted, or we draw from our. Uh our infant balance, our reserves, and allocate thirty thousand dollars to this, or whatever the amount would be. Um as far as when you need to do it, like I said, I think you could do this. You know, a decision needs to be made now for this month. Uh going forward, you could probably have this conversation every year of this thing.
So the decision needs to be made now, the thing is, if we say no, then that's it, we can't get it back at all.
Like I said, I think it could, I think you could have this on the agenda every month if you chose. So if you voted no now and next month.
It won't be a dead issue?
Because I understand that it wouldn't be, I don't know that you, uh it'd be something I'd need to look into. I don't know if you voted yes this month, and next month the five board members changed their mind because there was political pressure from the community, they wanted to change their mind. I was, when you change your mind and say no, you change your mind, so it's assumed that the opposite, that would be true. But again, I'm not, this is a brand new law, I'm guessing.
And possibly if the motion was made for the entire year, then to not receive those funds, which, you know, you could do that, you could make the motion. To include that, then it would be a dead issue for the whole year.
Right, so that is my thought here, so um I can't speak for everybody, but um my thought is that we are not going to want to take any money. From the kids.
Yeah.
Right, that, all right, so.
So I, I will amend my motion to say that we would opt out for the entire school year. Or fiscal year.
Right. Would you be willing to amend your second? Yeah, so we have a a mo- a motion and an amendment to opt out uh of the uh stipend program for the entire school year, for our principal this year.
Can we table it to for next month?
No, her motion, no, we have to vote on the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, so if the motion passes, then it's final, if it, if it doesn't pass, then someone could make another motion, or then we could decide to table it.
Are we still in discussion right now?
We are.
Okay, so my thought would be then, why couldn't we pass it with? With our understanding, a zero, so otherwise, what I'm saying is. We don't want the money, but I really don't want to just. Push this aside and.
This, I, I, I understand, but my service to this. School board has never been about getting paid. And I do not want to take. A dollar out of. Out of, you know, from students, right, um you know.
Unless it's for training, like when we go to conferences, so to be.
That was one of the questions, what if there's this like super amazing school board conference and like the things that work?
There, there is, so, so we. Personally, um, I allow the district to pay for, um. This year, my summer conference registration and my summer hotel. Bill. Most years, the fall conference registration and the fall hotel bill, I do not. Ask for mileage and I do not ask for meals to be paid. Others, I don't actually know.
Yeah, it's up to the individual.
But.
School board has a training budget.
Yeah, there is a training budget.
Yeah.
That pays for the.
Mostly conference.
For those two to four things. And I actually like the idea of, um, saying May for this year, and that way. If need be, it can be addressed in the budget, even though we still have the opportunity to next year say no again.
Right, I think going forward, this probably, I'll, we'll make a note, Michelle and I, this will really be like a February, March discussion. We need to be talking about it, okay, we're, we're going to make a motion to stay in course for twenty-four, twenty-five, or, then we'd like to look at. I don't think it happened the way I read them, also doesn't have to be a five hundred dollar stamp.
Right.
It can be a five-dollar stamp, or a hundred and fifty-dollar stamp. It's really been fifty for a long time, I mean, board's right, you know, it's always been fifty, that's actually. So you could, but. We'll have it earlier in the spring, so that if ever a board does want to go down this path, it would be something that we budget.
So it can be readjusted.
Each year it will have to be readressed, yeah.
Okay.
Because you made it just in one year anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I, and I don't think that I can say five.
You'd be speaking for my term, yeah. Any other discussion? Here none, we have a motion and a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? If everyone say aye, I didn't hear everybody, so. Okay, all right, so motion carries five to zero, thank you. That's okay, just want to make sure. Um, next up is our organizational appointments for school year twenty-three, twenty-four. We have a resolution, this is something that we do every year, uh, which is required by policy.
That race, if anyone wants this.
So these are, um, so the motion, we need to have board action, so we can just motion to pass resolution twenty-three, twenty-four slash zero-one. Uh, that would include all the information on this sheet. So we'll know, there's no significant changes last year.
So, um, the official newspaper is the registered guard, if, if, does the review not? If, okay.
Right, so unless there's any.
One moment, please.
Okay. All right, so it does require action, so I didn't have much.
Motion for, uh, for.
Yeah, motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right, so next is election of board chair and vice chair, obviously, we have a motion and board action for this.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, the name is Board Chair and.
Is that how it is now?
Yes. Your second? Your second.
Okay, I'll second that.
And you vote on it?
Right.
So a motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Right, um, as far as personnel, uh, we do have, um, a few, uh, licensed employees, resignation, new hires transferred to other. That does require board action for certified staff and administrative staff. And so those are the ones up there on the board or on the agenda. So we could need a motion and second.
I move that we approve the employee resignations, new hires, transfers, and other, uh, as presented in ten eight.
A motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. All right, so the non-licensed personnel report is, is on there, um, and those are just the information only for some of the other positions. All right, um, so we come to any late items or closing comments by the board. Late item, just in case you haven't had a chance, I wanted to introduce. Uh, our vice principal, we see her tonight, Cindy Van De Pop.
Wow.
Yes.
That's a great first day.
Touched me last night late, and said she was excited, and she backed her lunch. All right, if there's no other late items or closing comments, then we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks to all for being here.